All right, well, it is 4:02 PM and we're going to officially get started today. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brett Schonzenbach and I am the president and CEO of the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce. It is our pleasure and honor to have you all on this call today with us on this Zoom meeting for our 2020 Carlsbad City Council Candidate Forum. And I have an easy job today. I basically get to introduce our moderator and then kind of step back and just field whatever questions you may put into the chat today. So I get the pretty easy job. One little bit of housekeeping, I would like to encourage you to put your screen in what is called speaker view. If you're not familiar with Zoom, in your upper right-hand corner, there's a little, either a box with a bunch of little squares in it, and it either right now says speaker view, or it probably might say gallery view. So if you're in speaker view, you should see the main person speaking on the large part of your screen, and then the rest of our panelists up on the top. So I encourage you to go to speaker view so that you can always see who is talking the easiest. So it's my pleasure today to introduce the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Matt Leonard. Matt's a financial advisor and he is graciously agreed to be our moderator today, and I'll let him introduce our timekeeper. And I'm going to be quiet now and turn it over to you, Matt.
Thank you, Brett. It's a pleasure to be here with everybody today at the 2020 City Council Candidate Forum. It's a pleasure to be the chair of the Chamber of Commerce this year and serve the chamber in its efforts to be the voice of business in our community. Today, I'm working alongside Chair-elect Catherine McGonagall. Catherine is also a financial planner in the neighborhood and a longtime member of the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce. She has a tough job today of keeping everybody in a timely manner as we move through this forum today. So one disclaimer, the questions that are being asked today were not written by me, nor do they endorse my political views or opinions. My role today as the moderator of this event is to make sure in a timely manner the questions are asked and the candidates are given each a fair amount of time for their responses to the questions. So without further ado, thank you for joining us today, and we're going to get into our candidate introductions. We're going to start in alphabetical order by first name, starting with Keith Blackburn from District 2.
Hi, I'm Keith Blackburn. I bring a unique perspective to our council, and that is that I have experience in both public and private business. I've been a small business owner. I retired as a Carlsbad Police Sergeant, and I've served on our city council for 12 years. I've worked with Mayors Lewis Hall and council members Colchon and Packard. I may not always agree with them, but I have learned an awful lot from them. My roots in Carlsbad run deep. My parents, my sister, her family, my daughter, my grandchildren, we all live in Carlsbad. I stay connected with our community through volunteerism, including volunteering at the Animal Shelter, Boys and Girls Club of Carlsbad, Meals on Wheels, and Junior Achievement. I've spent most of my adult life contributing to making Carlsbad the success it is today, and I plan on continuing. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Leila Panagides.
Hi, my name is Leila Panagides. I'm the owner of a leadership development company, where I've spent over two decades helping companies and organizations during periods of disruptive change and transition. I'm a business leader, a community volunteer, a problem solver, and most importantly, a working mom. Carlsbad is really the best place to live. We have wonderful schools, open spaces, beaches, and libraries, and it's going to take innovative, creative problem solving to maintain and improve the quality of life we enjoy here. And just because we're in a time of crisis, it doesn't mean that our core values have changed. I'm a graduate of the Carlsbad Citizens Academy, a member of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, a storied member of the Agua Hidiana Laguna Foundation, and a proud member of the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce and the National Association of Corporate Directors. I'm also an active member of the Ready Carlsbad Business Alliance, which focuses on emergency preparedness, response, and recovery. I have the support and endorsement of several North County Mayors and a deputy mayor, as well as the Sierra Club, who understand the importance of local collaboration and cooperation to address shared problems such as climate change. I'm running to protect our open spaces and environment, improve our road safety and mobility, support our small businesses, and provide quality public services to our seniors. I look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Thank you, Leila. Phil Urbina, representing District 4. Yep.
Try that again. Thanks to everybody who's tuning in. This is such an important election. I feel very fortunate that I've been able to live in Carlsbad for 40 years, and I've been involved in the community for that 40 years. I've been involved in the Chamber of Commerce for pretty much that whole 40 years. I've served on the Board of Directors of the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce for seven years. I served as chairman of the board, the same position you have, Matt, here on the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce. And so I have a unique perspective. I've been in the corporate world. I've run a small business. I have a unique perspective of the problems Carlsbad businesses face today, especially during this COVID crisis, and especially when the competition might not be down the street on El Comino Real, but it might be in China or Vietnam somewhere. I have served this community in many capacities as a leader. I have been president, or the equivalent title, of the Carlsbad Boys and Girls Club, the La Casa Youth Organization, the Carlsbad Christmas Bureau, and the Knights of Columbus. I've been serving Carlsbad as a Rotarian for 35 years. I've been Rotarian the year, twice, and Rookie of the Year. If I'm elected, I will focus on public safety, fiscal responsibility, and responsible growth management. I have a record of leading successful organizations to serve the people of Carlsbad, and that's what I will do on the Carlsbad City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And our last introduction, certainly not least, is Teresa Acosta.
Hi, yes, I'm Teresa Acosta. I'm a candidate for Carlsbad City Council, District 4. I'm a small business owner here in Carlsbad and an active community leader. I've spent the last 20 years working with government agencies to help them better serve their communities throughout California. I've spent the last 10 years as a business owner negotiating public-private partnerships. I'm an active volunteer. I chair two committees right here at the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce. I co-chair the Government Affairs Committee, and I chair the Technology Advisory Committee. I've served on multiple nonprofit boards here in the community, from MAC Project to the National Charity League. I am very excited to be running for city council and proud to be one of four generations of La Costa residents, from my grandmother, who's 97, to my daughter, who's 21. I'm running to protect our quality of life now and to plan for the future, for my daughter's future. I will champion environmental protections, smart infrastructure, safe neighborhoods, and a strong local economy. I will bring my collaboration skills, my negotiation and facilitation skills, and my leadership experience to the Carlsbad City Council. I will also bring a true and deep sense of public service. I look forward to our discussion today and to earning your support for District 4. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, everybody. So just a quick, at www.carlsbad.gov, you can find, whoop, it's not showing up, a district map. And today we have two candidates each from District 2 and District 4. You could think District 1 is the village. District 2, you can think about being a little bit southbound of the village and everything that isn't the village, so to the east and along the coast. District number 3, you can think of as Aviara, and District number 4, you can think of as La Costa. So today we have candidates from District 2 and District 4. Campaigning for District 2 are Keith Blackburn and Leila Panagides, and campaigning for District 4 are Teresa Acosta and Phil Urbina. For the audience today, as you're listening to questions throughout the session, at the end of the, at the end of the forum, as time permits, if you would like to ask the candidates a question, please populate that question to the chat feature. And again, this is going to be dependent on the time that we have available. If we have time, we will be taking questions from the audience. Again, please populate that question within the chat feature. Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on now to a few, to some, a couple of questions. Each candidate's going to have 90 seconds to respond. For the first round, we're going to start with Leila, Phil, Teresa, followed by Keith. And the first question, again, 90 seconds apiece. In November 2019, the cities of Carlsbad, Del Mar and Solana Beach formed a Clean Energy Alliance, a nonprofit public entity that will operate a community choice energy program within their service territories. Please share your views on the role of Clean Energy Alliance and your overall position on the city achieving its Climate Action Plan goals. Again, 90 seconds per candidate. We are starting with Leila.
I support CCE because really it's one of the key strategies to meet our greenhouse gas targets and our Climate Action Plan goals. And since 2005, the largest increases of our CO2 in Carlsbad was generated by SDGNE in the production of electricity, mostly from fossil fuels. And the transportation sector is the largest contributors of GHG emissions in Carlsbad. We need clean, resilient, and locally produced and distributed energy, not just for reducing our GHGs, but as a driver of economic growth, leading to good-paying jobs and diversifying our tax base in Carlsbad. And I think Carlsbad can demonstrate leadership in this space by promoting environmentally friendly industries and providing incentives. Now, just a few years ago, ExxonMobil was the most profitable company on the planet, but it's been kicked off the Dow Jones, and clean energy stocks have gone up 45% this year. China says it wants to be number one producer of clean energy industry in the world. Let's make the United States the leader. Let's make Carlsbad one in this space. And as the Chamber of Commerce, we can work together with our local community colleges and partner with industry experts to provide workforce training programs, prepare individuals for a wide variety of career opportunities. I have the endorsement of the Mayors of Del Mar, and they're on board with the CCE, one of our partners, and I look forward to leading on this issue as your council member.
Thank you, Leila. Phil?
Community choice energy is a great idea with a lot of potential. The idea is that it's going to save us 2% and create a lot of green energy. I think it's going to be very difficult for us to create 2% savings for our ratepayers. But in order to do that, one of the key factors here is going to be that Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Solana Beach are not sufficient to create those economies of scale. We need to grow that to have any success in the future. We need to make sure that we are working with other cities to grow that CCE. And if we can't get past Del Mar and Solana Beach and Carlsbad, then Carlsbad needs to look at joining other groups. It's a great idea. It's a way for us to save energy, to create more green energy. We need to continue promoting solar energy on houses and in our parking lots. We need to also realize that it's actually more expensive to create greenhouse, to create renewable energy than it is some of the others. So to create that 2% savings, we're going to need to make sure we partner up with some other cities that have the skills and the greatpayers to make that a successful CCE.
Thank you, Phil. Teresa?
Thank you for the question. I support the Clean Energy Alliance. As I mentioned, I've worked with government agencies all over California for 20 years. It's not just groups of cities, but actually individual cities have been able to make CCEs work and work with a cost reduction for their taxpayers, for their ratepayers. So we can do it. If there's a will, there's a way. I'm an environmentalist who walks the walk. I have been endorsed by the Sierra Club and the League of Conservation Voters because of this. I have ideas about how we can reduce greenhouse gases in other ways, too. But the Clean Energy Alliance is an important part of that. I support it absolutely, and I know that we can find a way to ensure that we meet that goal of 2%. When it's up and running and online in May of 2021, we will show everybody that we were able to make it happen, and because there was leadership at the helm.
Thank you, Teresa. Our last respondent on that question, please, Keith.
Everything the other three candidates spoke about is absolutely true and accurate. Let me just tell you a little bit of a story on how I ended up supporting it. This was all new to me. When I first got elected 12 years ago, I had members of the chamber, members of Sierra Club, teach me about what CCE and CCA was. I had no idea what it was. It was interesting to learn about all of the differences, but originally I thought, well, why would we want to go away from a reliable source like San Diego Gas and Electric? Well, I learned quickly that San Diego Gas and Electric will continue to provide the delivery of power, but they're trying desperately to get out of the providing the suppliers of power. So this gave us the absolute perfect opportunity not to be in competition with SDGNE, but to work in conjunction with them and their cooperation, and to be able to use renewable energy. Now, saving 2% doesn't sound like a big deal, but when we're able to save money instead of increase the costs of energy, that's a good thing. And I absolutely support it. I've learned so much about it, and I look forward to CCE being a provider of our energy. But I do, I am concerned about the economy of scale, much like Phil said. I do want to make sure that we get more members in our CCE other than just Del Mar, Solana Beach, and Carlsbad.
Wow, perfect timing, Keith. Okay, thank you so much. We are now moving on to our second question. We are going to start this second question. Phil will respond first, Teresa, followed by Keith, and then Leila. The second question, in March 2019, the city reached a settlement with the County of San Diego regarding the future operations of McClellan Palomar Airport. As part of that agreement, the city had ceased its efforts to change zoning requirements on the land surrounding the airport, which the county had opposed. The proposed change would have placed new limits on the airport supporting uses outside the airport. Please share your views about this settlement and the city's relationship to the airport. Again, we're starting with Phil. And please unmute yourself, Phil.
I used to work in government affairs and the legal part of the legal department in the cable TV industry. And one thing I know for sure is sometimes it makes sense to come up with a settlement, and you don't always get what you want. I think the city did a good job in coming up with a settlement of that, given the fact that the county actually operates that, and looking at what we could possibly come away with. Carlsbad Airport is a great asset to the city, but we understand it also comes with some problems. And we need to make sure we're listening to citizens, and we are doing everything that we can to make sure that airport is operating within the guidelines and what we can control. And what we can't control, we need to make sure that we're partnering with the County of San Diego to make sure it's controlling whatever it can, so it has fewer negative impacts on Carlsbad residents.
Thank you, Phil. Teresa?
Thank you. I oppose airport expansion at the Palomar-McClellan Airport. And I know that the settlement agreement was an attempt to come to terms with the County of San Diego so that we could move forward. As a small business owner who works on public-private partnerships, I understand and I support the idea. I think settlement agreements are usually a great idea. This particular settlement agreement had large loopholes that the county has taken advantage of. And many of you may know that the county had agreed to notify the city if they were buying adjacent land parcels to the airport and trying to expand despite the city declaring its intention not to, not to have it expand. So the county has gone ahead and done that and purchased land parcels and not publicly declared their intention. It was found out later. So that was a big loophole. It wasn't clear how they were supposed to notify the city of Carlsbad or the public. There are other loopholes in the settlement agreement. I am opposed to that. I think the settlement agreement could have been better and stronger, and I have been endorsed by the citizens for a friendly airport because of my stance on this. I think that the community has made it clear that we don't want the noise pollution or the environmental impacts of a larger airport, a busier airport near residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Keith, would you respond next, please?
Minute and a half to discuss something that's been going on for 10 years is going to be difficult, but I'll try my best. The county owns the airport. The FAA regulates the planes in the airspace above the airport, and it just happens to be right in the middle of the city of Carlsbad. We brought in some of the best attorneys we could find to help with our city attorney. We brought in attorneys from Colorado who are airport experts. They spent many hours with our community, with our staff, with the county, and between them and our city staff and our city attorney, they formulated a settlement agreement that these experts feel are in the best interest of the city of Carlsbad. The city of Carlsbad entered into that agreement. Now, there's still a lot going on. There's a lot of discussion about what is an expansion. There's a lot of talk about the extension of the airport runway for safety reasons, and does that mean it's an expansion of the airport? So this is a very difficult conversation. But I voted in favor of the settlement agreement because we brought in the best minds in airport law, and they put this together and said this will be the best opportunity for us to do the best job we can to protect the citizens of Carlsbad.
Thank you, Keith. Leila?
Yes, I feel personally invested because this is in District 2. And let's be clear that the airport provides important accessibility to our business community as well as providing jobs. It's one of the key revenue drivers is jet fuels, the sale of jet fuel. However, the community has made it very clear that it does not want to expand the runway due to concerns of increased traffic and noise. And I support maintaining Palomar Airport as it is now. It's a B2 designated airport with no runway expansion. Now, my opponent has voted against keeping the airport as it is now, a B2 airport. At issue, which is central, is that the airport expansion plans are inconsistent with the city of Carlsbad's general plan, the community vision, and our core values. In 1980, the citizens of Carlsbad passed an ordinance that requires voter authorization for any airport expansion. The County of San Diego failed in their attempt to show reasonable need for an expansion in their master plan. And in 2018, the city of Carlsbad filed a lawsuit against the county because it did not meet the county's Climate Action Plan. But then a year later, it settled with the county and gave away its rights and authority in a closed-door meeting without any public discussion. The current council members present today voted to settle with the county, giving up our local control. And this is a direct violation of what the citizens of Carlsbad voted for in 1980. The settlement agreement gave away our power and city's rights, and I am for the citizens of Carlsbad. Come to my meet and greet tomorrow night because we're going to discuss all of this and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Leila. Okay, thank you for the responses on that question. The next question, we're going to hear from Teresa first, Keith second, Leila third, and then Phil will hear from you last. The next question is that Sandag, the Regional Transportation Authority in San Diego, they have proposed five bold moves. The five bold moves proposes to invest significantly in regional public transportation. Please share your views on how traffic on Interstate 5 and within our community should be managed. We're starting, thank you.
Thank you. I heard it. Thank you. I am supportive of Sandag's five big moves. I think that we need a bold vision for our region transportation.
We'll give Teresa just a second here while her internet probably catches up with us. Teresa?
Can you hear me now?
Probably need to go.
Oh goodness. I can't believe I froze. Okay, I just had AT&amp;T come out and check my signals, so I hope that it doesn't freeze again. Thank you. I'm supportive of Sandag's five big moves. I think that we need a bold vision that includes regional collaboration, and I think that this is it. It is bold, it is expensive, and it is going to take a lot of buy-in from the community. So we need to speak about these issues with the public. We need to discuss them, get public input, vet them with our communities throughout the region, and ensure that folks are on board. These include things like public transit. They include infrastructure. They include looking at technology and ensuring that we are taking our transportation systems into the future, that we are not putting more cars onto already congested transportation networks. So I'm in support of Sandag's five big moves. It's a bold thing to address climate change and reduce greenhouse gases, and we're all going to need to bind together and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Keith?
I agree with Teresa on some of her statements, and she said that those are bold, expensive goals, and they are. And I think that they're headed in the right direction. Unfortunately, a lot of the revenue that would be spent on that is coming, is not going to be spent on our current issues and the issues that'll probably be in our near future, which is Highway 5 and Highway 78, especially the transition area. So although I do like that Sandag is looking forward and worried about our transportation, public transportation, our environment, I think they're skipping too far ahead too quickly and ignoring the needs we have for Interstate 5 and Interstate 78 currently.
Great. Leila?
So I want to do what's best for Carlsbad, for our state, and for the planet. And that means fulfilling first our Carlsbad community vision and our Climate Action Plan. Now, Sandag has, you know, this vision. It's really to develop a world-class transportation system with the core focus to reduce greenhouse gases and meet our Climate Action Goals. Now, I support plans where we have agreement and collective action to reduce carbon and get us as quickly as possible to net zero emissions. Now, COVID has changed everything, all of our current and future assumptions. So we have to take into consideration more people working at home even after this pandemic. And I look forward to having that discussion with the community, with our regional partners, to really understand how this plan may need to be revisited going forward.
Great. Thank you so much, Leila. Phil?
We all love bold plans. When you call them a bold plan, that's probably the greatest marketing you could do. But bold plans have to be realistic. And it's not just quite a bit costly. It's $177 billion plan with no guarantee of success, with no guarantee that it will reduce greenhouse emissions at all. It may very well be another government boondoggle. My wife and I visited our son studying abroad this past fall. We went to Madrid, Rome, and Barcelona, and we took public transit everywhere. It was delightful. But everywhere I looked, you go right off the street, the main streets, and there are massive apartment complexes and high density, 10, 20 unit stories. And that's why those work. And that's why it will not work here in Carlsbad. That plan is just never going to benefit anybody in Carlsbad, but it's going to cost each person in this county, man, woman, and child, $50,000 per person. We need to be widening our roads. We need to be taking measured approaches to high-speed transit. We need to be improving our bus lines to the extent that we can. And we need to take advantage of COVID and the Zoom world that we live in, just like we're doing today, and encourage companies to work from home, have their people. Carlsbad, especially South Carlsbad, 15% of the people work from home. That's a great thing.
Thank you, Phil. Moving on. Moving on to the next question, the next order, Keith, Leela, Phil, and Teresa. The next question. Carlsbad has been assigned a significant number of housing units by Sandag for its regional housing number allocation. How do you propose meeting these numbers?
We have a general plan that lays out what we hope to have when we reach buildout. Unfortunately, the state is requiring that we build more high-density housing than what our general plan planned for. So now we're starting to look at what is a reasonable place to put high-density housing. Some of the arguments are they need to be intermingled with the rest of the community throughout the city. But we end up getting a lot of pushback from residents. They don't want apartment complexes at the end of their street. So one of the things that I've been really working hard at, I started working with Westfield when Westfield owned the mall that was near Highway Seventy Eight, and now working with Brookfield. I think that we have so much property on the west side of the mall. The parking lot is owned by the city, but we have a joint agreement with the owners of the mall that nothing can be done with the parking lot unless we both agree to do it. I think right now is an excellent opportunity to work with Westfield, who does want to work with us, to finding, putting in high-density housing on that west side of the mall. It's near transportation, it's near jobs, and it's not at the end of the street where people have houses where they live and they're going to be upset that we're putting in high-density apartments. There are a lot of other ideas about changing industrial areas or doing mixed use where we have retail on the bottom and housing on the top. There's a lot of great ideas we're working on. We're gathering public input, and our staff is working diligently on these ideas.
Thank you so much, Keith. Leela.
So the state requires us to build affordable housing units. Plus, it's the right thing to do for people who work in the city. We have a jobs-housing imbalance. And our city staff said that in order to comply with the requirements, we need to build around thirteen hundred lower-income housing units and about two hundred and thirty-five moderate-income housing units. Now, of the total, eighty-five percent are really low-income. And I just want you to know that that low income is defined as an annual income of fifty-three thousand dollars to eighty-five thousand dollars for a family of four in Carlsbad. Recently, the Carlsbad residents responded to a housing survey that was sent out. We had over four thousand responses, which is one of the highest response rates for any city survey. And the question was, where should we build these units? The number-one response from our residents was, quote, "at vacant industrial sites that have been converted to residential use." Now, I agree with Keith about the parking lot at the mall. I think it's being underutilized. I support that. I also support vacant industrial lots. A lot of these businesses might not come back or have their employees work from home, and those buildings are vacant. We should look at that as an innovative way to support our affordable housing needs. So we have the space. Our residents told us what they want. Now we need the political will to make that happen.
Thank you so much, Leela. Phil, your turn.
I was talking with my daughter not long ago, and she was getting ready to graduate from Creighton University in Nebraska. And she told me that her plan was to stay there because she could never imagine being able to afford to live in Carlsbad. That broke my heart. One of the reasons why I'm running for city council is so we can work to make sure our children can come back and they can live in Carlsbad. We need to make sure we have housing for our police officers, our nurses, our teachers, and our restaurant workers. The Rena numbers that we have from Sandag are expecting us to build thirty-nine hundred homes in Carlsbad over the next decade. We need a council that will look closely at our options and decide where we can put those and what types of housing that we could do without destroying the character that makes Carlsbad the great place that we love to call home. We certainly can look at vacant industrial areas in the industrial park. I would absolutely support that. And we can look at some of the strip malls that need to be retrofitted, that are getting aged. We can put commercial on the bottom floors, and we can put residential on the upper floors. I think the El Comuna Real and La Casa Avenue strip mall that's being redone right now would have been a perfect place for us to be able to do that. But we need to build those thirty-nine hundred homes, a wide variety of them, and we need to make sure we do it in such a way that it's responsible and does not destroy the character of Carlsbad.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you. Teresa.
We have a housing supply issue in Carlsbad. You may know that we have some of the highest housing prices in the entire county, and we definitely have the highest rent prices in all of San Diego County. And that's because Carlsbad is a very desirable place to be, but it's also because we don't have enough housing units. So when the state came down with its numbers for individual communities, we ended up with an allotment of three thousand eight hundred seventy-five units we need to build here in Carlsbad. We need to plan that over the next eight years or face penalties. So how can we do that? And we do that by working together with the community. Leela mentioned a housing survey. I know that that had an excellent response rate. I responded to it and shared my feedback. I've also been hosting community events in District Four to talk about the future of housing in Carlsbad. This is such an important issue for our quality of life. Where will they go? How will we be able to fit them into a city that's almost at buildout? In the past, our city council was able to make sure that land was able to be developed in large quantity and large density. We see some of those projects that are just now online, and we were able to reap the tax benefits of those. Now we're nearing buildout where it's going to be harder to place them. So I'm looking at ideas like rezoning certain commercial and industrial areas to residential. I like mixed-use projects. I like upzoning in some areas. I definitely like transit-oriented developments. We've been talking about these issues. Those are the issues that I prioritize for our community, and I will continue to work with you on those.
Thank you, Teresa. Our next question for ninety-second responses from candidates revolves around the homeless challenge that we have in our community. Homelessness, and just, I'm going to back up a bit. The next order will be Leela, Phil, Teresa, and Keith. Homelessness has become a significant issue in North County San Diego. Share how you think the city of Carlsbad should solve this challenge. Again, starting with Leela.
So for District Two, it didn't come up as the top issue, but it is a very important issue for our city and for our region. And because it's a regional issue, it requires a regional response. These kinds of issues, which are complex and very difficult, require close collaboration and cooperation with county, state, and federal partners. And in Carlsbad, we're lucky to have the homeless outreach team. I look forward to ways to support them, to meet our homeless population, find housing and support services. Just a few weeks ago, I met with the Board of Directors of the Friends of La Posada. They shared with me that our men's shelter here is bursting at the seams. They're overcapacity. And you can imagine during COVID how difficult that is. They simply don't have the additional space, and they're in much need of supplies. Now, it's important that people understand that the Boise Court decision prohibits municipalities from relocating homeless people to shelters if that community doesn't have the bed capacity to match our homeless count. The last point in time count, we had about a hundred and sixty-one. We have sixty beds. So perhaps we can explore some ideas around expanding La Posada or identifying a second shelter. Either option has to include the homeless women and children. It's a priority. And finally, I think for our community, the expansion of homeless beds to match the point in time count would give our hot team the ability to reduce the number of people on the streets and get them into an environment that they can provide services that they need.
Thank you so much. Phil, your turn.
Thank you, Matt. I only wish we could solve this. This is a nationwide problem, and nobody has found the solution. But what we can do is address it. And I believe Carlsbad needs to be compassionate. We all want to be compassionate. We all want to help those people who we can help. And to do that, our hot team is going out there, and they're working to put our homeless people together with services to help them because they have a lot of different problems. Every homeless person has a different problem. You cannot just take one and say, here's our solution. But I also think we need to think long-term. One of the greatest programs we have here in North County to help people is Solutions for Change. It has a one-thousand-day program to take families and give them the skills that they need so they won't be homeless any longer. I've toured that facility many times. It's a great organization, and we need to help them. They work at teaching people to fish, not just giving them a fish. But the last thing I'll have to add is, we also need to protect ourselves from those people who don't want to avail themselves of those services. We've had a couple of murders here recently and rapes from homeless people. And we need to make sure we give our police all we can to deal with those problems and keep us safe.
Thank you, Phil. Teresa.
Thank you. The homeless problem in our region is a regional issue, and it will require regional problem solving. I have been involved with the San Diego Union Tribune Community Advisory Board. I sat on that board for three years, and this was one of the major regional issues that we tackled together. We put on a forum. I helped organize the forum where we had a panel of experts from our region and beyond come and talk with us about Housing First and other models, ways that we can provide wraparound services. And I know also that the San Diego County Health and Human Services Agency is coordinating with all of the cities in North County to tackle this together through a regional task force. So I'm proud to see the regional collaboration on this issue, and I know that that's what it's going to take to tackle this very difficult problem. We are going to have to band together with nonprofits, with government agencies at different levels that seek more funding to build more housing. But tackling also the low-income housing issue that we previously discussed is very important. We also need to focus on mental health and on immediate assistance to people who are currently living in encampments. We know that we cannot remove them from public spaces without having a bed for them by state law. So we need to ensure we have enough beds for them, but also that we have a path to sustainability for them.
Thank you, Teresa. Keith, you're up.
I love being able to start off with saying, I agree with everything everyone before me said, except for a few little tweaks. It's not a city, regional, or state, or even a nation problem. It's a worldwide problem. And we're not going to fix it in Carlsbad. So we're doing the best we can to chip away at it. Our hot team is unbelievable. I love discussing some of their accomplishments. Our hot team started out with two officers and a sergeant. We quickly added two more officers. It's five total police officers. We have a coordinator. We have social workers, and they're doing a wonderful job. It's not all about enforcement. These guys are taking our homeless population, one human being at a time, trying to find out what that human being's particular issues are and trying to fix it. If it's something like they don't have identification, so they can't collect their social security, these guys are throwing them in the car with them and driving them to DMV and standing in line at DMV with them and getting them their identification, if that's what they need. There's one story that was kind of funny, that one woman had a bird, and none of the low-income housing would take this bird because it was loud. Well, these guys went and got the bird certified as a public or a personal service bird, so that way they couldn't discriminate against her for housing. They're coming up with the most creative ideas. They are so human. They're being so human about it and so compassionate, and these are police officers who want to help. And I just love bragging about the accomplishments, but all they can do is just help our residents, one resident at a time.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you for everybody's responses on those questions. We're moving on to a different section now, and we are now moving into yes and no responses. So for the audience, what you're going to see is I'm going to ask our candidates a question, and the candidates are simply going to raise up a sign to that yes or no question that says yes or no, reflecting their views on the particular question. For our candidates, please make your answer either a yes or a no. Okay, please try not to put up both signs. Let's, if it's a forty-one percent no, excuse me, if it's a fifty-one percent no, then it's more no than yes. Please lean in that direction, okay? So for the first question, the order in which we're, well, everybody's going to come up at the same time. So the first question. The coaster is a great asset to the city of Carlsbad and also a disruption to the Carlsbad Village in some ways. Do you support the city investing both time and money to trench the tracks in downtown Carlsbad? So Phil is responding yes, Teresa, yes, Keith, yes, and Leela, no. Thank you very much. Question number two. Recent behavior by law enforcement, recent behavior by law enforcement personnel in the United States has brought to the surface a public discussion about how the police conduct their business. Do you support defunding the police in the city of Carlsbad? That is unanimous and easy to respond. That is a no. Thank you, everyone. The third question. Are you advocating for creating a community review board to oversee our police department and its implementation of the eight can't-wait policies that they're adopting in June? I'll repeat the question. Are you advocating for, Teresa, give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Thank you. Are you advocating for creating community review board to oversee our police department and its implementation of the eight can't-wait policies that were adopted in June? Unfortunately for Teresa, I must not be coming through clearly. Phil? Thank you, Teresa. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Thank you to all the respondents. Moving on to the next question. Recently, the topic of project labor agreements has surfaced in our community. These agreements give preference to the labor organizations on public capital improvement projects. Do you support adopting project labor agreements? Teresa is responding yes, Phil, no, Leela, no, and Keith, no. Thank you. Okay, hopefully now moving on to a section of fun questions. In this section, we're going to be asking our candidates a couple of open-ended questions on fun stuff. Our candidates are going to write down their responses. I'm hoping that I'm able to read them on such a small screen, and then I'm going to be reading the respondents' questions to the audience. So question number one. Please share your three favorite books that you've ever read. One item, just for the audience to not assume everything. We were talking about the HOT team, and if anybody is not familiar with that acronym, it's our homeless outreach team that is run by our Carlsbad Police Department. How's everybody doing? Is everybody ready? Okay, let's go ahead. Phil, if you're ready. So raise it up just a little bit. So for Phil, it's Of Mice and Men, The One Minute Manager, and then a little bit higher, please. Okay, two. All right, fantastic. Leela, thank you. A Long Walk to Freedom by Nelson Mandela, Race and Reunion, Night Circus, and so many more. A Long Walk to Freedom by Nelson Mandela, Race and Reunion, Night Circus, and so many more. Teresa. The Tale of Two Cities. Jane Eyre. And The Language of Flowers. Thank you, Teresa. And Keith? Oh my goodness, okay, that's hilarious. Wait for the movie. All right, excellent. Question number two. Name two people of influence in your life that have left a very lasting impact. So I'll go, I'll start with the first person who volunteers their answers. All right, so Keith, his grandmother and his mom, thank you very much, Keith. Do I have a volunteer? Phil, Bill Daniels and his mother. Thank you, Phil. Teresa, her 97-year-old grandmother. And our, the notorious RBG, Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Lila, her parents and her five best girlfriends. You all know who you are. Next question. Before COVID struck, where was the last vacation you took outside the city of Carlsbad? I'll take a volunteer when, when that first person is ready. Keith was in Nashville, Tennessee. Thank you, Keith. Phil, looks like Cabo San Lucas. Thank you, Phil. And for Lila, Zihuatanejo, Mexico. And Teresa, Portugal in November of 19. Thank you. Thank you. So we're now moving on to the next section. We're making phenomenal time. We're going to spend a few minutes gathering questions from the audience. Brett will be supplying those questions to me and then I'll be asking the respondents who will have 60 seconds for a response.
Matt, I have a few questions that have come in. And if you like, it might be easier, if you'd like, I can just ask the questions directly and then you can manage the, the response. The first one would be a yes/no question, if that's okay. And candidates, if you can grab your yes/no signs for this first one. And this is a, as Matt said, these are questions from the audience. Measure G is a Carlsbad measure that the voters will be voting on this election. And specifically, Measure G is for city council members' compensation. And so if Measure G passes, it would directly tie city council compensation to the Consumer Price Index for San Diego County. And so the question is, do you support Measure G, yes or no?
Teresa, yes. Phil, yes. Keith, yes. And Lila, yes, with a note. Thank you.
Thank you. And then if you would like, I have, have a couple more and these ones would not be yes/no. So these would be, as you pointed out, 60-second answers. And I don't know if you would like to identify who might go first on this one.
Let's go with Keith, Lila, Phil, and Teresa, please.
Once again, these are questions that have been submitted from the audience. And the first question is, could you please share your major financial supporters?
You know, I'm not sure who all my major financial supporters. I've been getting checks from every, everyone, from local residents to business owners, family members, friends who've moved away. So it's a mix all through, through the entire amount of money that we've raised.
Lila.
So when you first start running for office, it's called love money from family and friends. So that's where I got my startup funds, talking to a business audience. And I have, I think of, maybe as of yesterday, I have to check over 270, 50 individual donors. So I do call time, unfortunately do call time. We have no contribution limits in Carlsbad, which I disagree with. And so I'm calling donors of all over the United States. You have to be a US citizen and contacts, business contacts, but mostly people who are believing in my message and believing in me as a, as a candidate.
Thank you so much. Phil?
I am proud that my candidacy has been embraced by Carlsbad residents. 79% of the resident, of, of the money that I've raised has come directly from Carlsbad and 99% from San Diego County. So most of that's Carlsbad, some of it's Antonidas Ranch of Santa Fe, Oceanside, San Marcos areas right here. Mostly it's business people who have business interests here in Carlsbad. There's a lot of different ones. Those are, those are business people. Those are small people, $10 checks, $20 check. I'm very proud of that. My money is right here in Carlsbad.
Thank you, Phil. Teresa?
Thank you. One of the hardest parts of running for office, of stepping up to run for office for me, has been asking people to support the cause because it's always hard for me to, to ask for donations, even when I'm, I know and believe in the cause, whether it's for a nonprofit or for the campaign. So much as Lila mentioned, there is a concept of love money. And it's the idea that people who've known you for many years, I learned this through Emily's List, which is a women's training organization for political candidates, that people you've known, people who trust you and believe in you will step up when you ask them and you tell them what you're trying to accomplish for your community. That has been the vast majority, more than 90% of my contributions have been love money. People who know me have known me for the past 20 years through my government involvement, through my community involvement, and I've stepped up because they believe in me. And there has been also, that my endorsers have also come through with some amount that they can provide. And endorsements are essentially organizations that share the same core values with me. They meet with me and they agree to endorse and sometimes they contribute as well, sometimes.
Thank you so much, Teresa. So if the next question requires a response and is not a yes or no, we will be fall, we'll be starting with Teresa, Keith, Lila, and then Phil. If it is a yes or no question, then obviously we'll go that route. But please keep that order for the next question after that.
Yes, the next question will be a response question. And it regards, it's in regards to South Carlsbad Ponto Beach area. And it's had quite a history of proposed projects over the years. So there's a two-part, the first part of the question, if each candidate could please give a yes or a no to this first part and then share after you give your yes or no. But the first part of the question is based off of, Batakito's Lagoon Foundation had submitted something to city council back in April of 2019, a, a letter proposing a collaboration on the site. And they did not get a response for their letter. So their first, the first part of the question, if you were elected to city council, would you respond, would you support responding to letters that are received from organizations in Carlsbad or citizens regarding things like this? So that's the first part. Just give us the yes/no. But then the second part of the question is, please share your views on the future of South Carlsbad Ponto Beach area.
Great. I'll start with a yes. I, I always believe that it's important to engage our community organizations and our community residents. I place a high value on public engagement and I have a 24-hour email response goal. I'm pretty good at it, but I get, I get back to people, even when I disagree with them on their opinions. I believe that public input is so important. And I think that Batakito's Lagoon Foundation is an important asset to our community. So I think it's important to get back to them on their proposal. And when it comes to Ponto Coastal Park, I am in support of the Ponto Coastal Park. I have said so. I have published a statement on my social media and I've been in close communication with the residents of Ponto for over a year, talking about that site, learning about the history and the past mistakes that the city has made with regard to zoning, collecting fees from the local residents and spending it on a park elsewhere in the northern part of the city when there's a park deficit in the south part of the city, in my district, District Four. So I'm working closely with the residents. The goal is to achieve a Ponto Coastal Park. I support that. We will find a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Great. Keith?
I absolutely support responding. I can't imagine anybody saying, no, we don't want to respond. I don't know the circumstances of the letter. I don't know who it was sent to. I can tell you it wasn't sent to me. As far as South Ponto and the plan for South Ponto, I've been engaged with the residents there. They have a lot of requests, specifically a park in their area. But there's proper ways to do this. We have a general plan and the general plan dictates the layout of our community. And I've been trying to encourage the residents to go about it the proper way. And that's, we're trying to redo the, the general plan. We're trying to update it. It's, it's stale at this point. And by getting their input and getting the general plan to include a South Ponto park, that's the proper way to do it. I don't support piecemealing the city together. Our success in the city is because it's a well-planned city and it's done through the general plan.
Thank you, Keith. Lila?
So I'm running on a platform to protect our open spaces and environment and our last coastal properties for generations to come. And I believe that Ponto should have a park. I respect the voice of our community in the support of their creation of this last remaining coastal space, which is really our natural resource. In, in a January 2020 city council meeting, it was shared that the city made mistakes over the last 15 years regarding the planning process as it comes to Ponto. The city did not fully disclose to the citizens or the state requirements that they first needed to study the need for a public park. And I think it's important here, also looking at the money trail, to know that my opponent got contributions from Gromen and Associates as an Irvine attorney representing Shopoff and Shopoff Realty Investments made an initial purchase of the Ponto project to develop it into luxury residential townhomes. So I support the residents of Carlsbad to create a coastal park at Ponto for generations to come.
Thank you. Phil, your response, please.
You're on mute.
Certainly the city and every organization should respond to inquiries like that. I've lived in Carlsbad for 40 years. I've lived in that coastal area when I first moved here for many years. I drove the coast highway for years, every single day. And I've watched Carlsbad grow. I would love to see a park there and I would absolutely support a park there. But it's not that simple. I have ridden my bike there. I've walked that area. I've talked to residents there. I have talked to the leaders of the movement who want that park there. And they make a lot of sense, but it's a complex problem. And what I support is a comprehensive feasibility study to address all those issues. Because we can't make intelligent decisions without the facts. I think Carlsbad residents deserve council members who are going to get the facts and then make informed, intelligent decisions. So I want to push for that feasibility study so I can make a good informed decision when I'm on the council.
Thank you, Phil. If the next question is a response question, the order will be Phil, Teresa, Keith, followed by Lila. Brett?
Yes, this is a response question. With the city council, you know, being a, a part-time position, you know, and the compensation is basically a part-time compensation, compensation. How many hours a week are you available to do the job of being a city council person in the city of Carlsbad?
Phil, you're on mute, please.
I have to be honest with you. I'm looking forward to that. If elected to the city council, I would welcome a reduction in the time that I'm spending right now. Campaigning is a 24/7 job. But I'm very fortunate right now. I have a very, very flexible schedule. And I have been able to, I have a history of being able to balance a lot of balls in the air at the same time while being president of multiple organizations and on those boards of directors and getting things done. And that's what I will do for city of Carlsbad. I will spend as much time as needed to meet with people, study issues, and make intelligent decisions for the people of Carlsbad.
Thank you, Phil. Teresa, thank you.
I am committed to public service and I have worked in community service my entire life. I was the president of the Community Service Club in my high school. Community service is something that I've always valued and I feel is part of my life and part of my family's life too. I mentioned I was on the board of the National Charity League. It's a mother-daughter organization that encourages mothers and daughters to go out together and volunteer in the community. And that's how we became involved, serving meals through the Carlsbad Senior Center and picking up trash at our local beaches through Surf Rider Foundation. So it's part of my life already and I don't think that it would be much of a reduction from what I'm spending now on the campaign. It is a significant investment, but that's what I signed up for. I knew what I was getting into, eyes wide open, and I'm proud to be here stepping up to run for city council.
Thank you, Teresa. I believe the next response.
The next one was me.
Thank you, Keith.
The other two speakers right before me talked about how much time it takes to campaign. Unless you've campaigned, you don't have any idea how much time it takes. You're on the phone at midnight, you're walking flyers at nine o'clock in the morning before it gets too hot. It's a lot of work. And if you can get through the campaign, then the amount of time you spend working on the council's peanuts. But now seriously, we are paid as a part-time job. You make what you want of it. I'm very fortunate that I'm retired. I have the time to juggle my schedule. I'm very heavy into volunteerism and hobbies, but they are easily able to be taken a backseat to, to the council work. You find that when you do the council work, you get so addicted to it. Although you're compensated for part-time, you end up spending 30 to 40 hours a week easily on that job. I've been doing it for 12 years and I, and I love it.
Lila?
Yeah. So representative government is what we have and that means representing the public. It's public service. It's the public in representing. And that means you have to be accessible to those people that you represent, your constituents. And we have people on council who have never in their 12 years had a town hall meeting, open office hours, no, no newsletter, no social media presence, very difficult to get in touch with. I'm going to change that. I think it's really important that you're accessible to your constituents because their input gives you input and information about their pain points on the ground that then informs your decisions of policy for the city moving forward. So I own my business, so I have some flexibility and I am able to dig into the information. This is a complex city. I mean, this is a, you know, multimillion dollar budget with so many moving parts. And it's very important that you understand and have at least a good understanding of what all the issues are that are brought before council.
Thank you, Lila. For the next question, the order for responses is going to be Lila, followed by Phil, Teresa, and then Keith. Brett?
Yes, so many of you have mentioned different volunteer work you do. Question from the community. Please share with us the local volunteer organizations that you participate in and how long you have been involved with them.
So I have started a local group here in Calavera Hills where I live. And I was, is one of the reasons I got into this race because I saw a need and I brought the community together. It's called the Calavera Hills Traffic Safety Group. It's a member of, of, of parents and actually students, school administrator, school administrators, traffic, crossing guards when school is open. And we got together to really talk about these issues here in Carlsbad. I'm also a graduate of the Carlsbad Citizens Academy. I have spent time with our firefighters on a 10-hour ride along. I'm a member of the Aguahui de la Lagoon Foundation. So I really spent a lot of time understanding the issues here in Carlsbad. understanding the issues here in Carlsbad by talking to people. What are the issues? You don't have to live here very long to understand the issues that are facing Carlsbad.
Thank you. Phil, your turn.
I don't think 90 seconds would be enough for me to finish all of these, to be honest with you, but I'll give you a few of the highlights. But I'll start with in 2015, I was honored to be named Carlsbad Citizen of the Year. I've served in Rotary for 35 years. I was Rookie of the Year 35 years ago, and I've been Rotarian of the Year twice, 30 years apart. So I've been very active in all the work that Rotary does locally, regionally, and globally. I've been president of the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce, the Boys and Girls Club, the LaCosta Youth Organization, where I also coached 25 or so teams in baseball, soccer, and softball. Carlsbad Christmas Bureau, the Knights of Columbus, I have been involved in so many different things. I've gone through the city's Community Emergency Response Team, so I've done a lot of this city. I've tried to live by the Rotary motto of service above self, and I'm proud that I've been recognized for that.
Thank you, Phil. Teresa, it's your turn.
Great, thank you. I was worried about using bandwidth to look up things on LinkedIn, but feel free to check out my LinkedIn. I do have my volunteer experience on there and also on my website, theresaacosta.org. But just off the top of my head, I mentioned when I introduced myself that I chaired two committees right here at the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce. There's an organization in San Diego County called MAC Project that runs seven affordable housing communities and all the Head Start programs in North County. They help families become self-sustainable. I sat on the board for six years and chaired the Audit Committee. I stepped down when I announced that I was running for office, because we didn't want to jeopardize their 501(c)(3) status. I was on the Latino Advisory Board for the San Diego Union Tribune for three years, and then when that was disbanded, I helped form the Community Advisory Board for the San Diego Union Tribune. So I was on that. Again, had to step down when I decided to run for office because of a potential conflict. I was the Vice President of the National Charity League. I was a member of that organization for seven years with my daughter, and I see the stop sign. I knew that was going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Keith?
Wow, just in the four candidates here, we have an awful lot of volunteerism into the community, and I think we're all very proud of our volunteerism. I've been a volunteer at the County Animal Shelter for 12 years, where before COVID, I was very proud to say I did a minimum of one hour every single day. I've been working with the Boys and Girls Club for over 25 years, serving on the board for eight. My wife, at the time, served on the board with me, and I still work with the youth of the year. I delivered meals on wheels for five years. I work diligently and raise money for local animal rescue groups, and I currently work as a volunteer police officer at the Police Department.
Thank you so much. So the order for the next question will be Keith, Lila, Phil, followed by Teresa.
The question is, and again, this is from our audience, how would you handle criticism to policy decisions that you make, especially criticism on social media?
I teach a class of third graders called City Stuff. Third graders get to learn about the city, and it ends with a day at City Hall, and they do a mock City Council meeting. One of the best questions I was ever asked is, what's the hardest part of your job? And I'll tell you, the hardest part is, I'm human. I want to make everyone happy. In this job, you just can't. When we make a decision, some people are happy, others are disappointed. I've got thick skin, worked as a cop for 40 years, so I've got the thick skin that it takes. Sometimes I don't look at social media just for my own sanity, but we try very hard to make the best decision we can, and it just automatically will always come with criticism from people who are on the side that they don't agree with you.
Lila, your turn.
So it's important we have dissent. We have dissenting opinions for a reason. We don't always disagree on things, but I'm always willing to listen, and listening is probably is one of the most important things you can do. Obviously, there's different types of criticism. If it's just about my appearance, or my weight, or personal attack, that's not something I'm going to listen to. I'm going to listen to substantive issues. If you have a point of view that's different, I want to hear about it. That means I'm being curious, and instead of being reactive or defensive, lean in and say, I'm curious. Well, tell me more about that. I think that's really important. I don't have to please everybody. I'd rather be respected than liked, and I think it's important that leaders make decisions, because we have tough decisions, and we can't make everybody happy.
Thank you so much. Phil?
When I was considering running for city council, I was having lunch with Ted Owen, the predecessor to Brett as the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and Ted asked me that exact question. He said, Phil, how are you going to handle criticism? I said, Ted, on the weekends, I am a soccer referee and a baseball umpire, and believe me, I know what it's like to get criticized. And sometimes, I always tell people, just because you've gotten criticized doesn't mean they were wrong. So we have to listen to people. We have to be open. As a referee, when I make a mistake, I have to, I kind of obsess about it until I figure out why I made a mistake, so I won't do that the next time. And so I have experience as a facilitator. I'm looking to listen to people and always look for the solution, and you can't make everybody happy, so we'll just go with that.
Thank you so much.
When I decided to run for city council, this was definitely one of the attracting points on my list of pros and cons was, was the attacks that are personal, not having disagreements about the issues, but how people feel like they can attack you as a person. They forget that you're a mother, a sister, a daughter, that you have a family, that you're a neighbor down the street. So I have, I swallowed that fear, and I decided I'll run anyway, because this is important enough. There's a trade-off. This is important enough to give back to my community and to do this public service, to step up, to run, to be a leader. So I put that aside, and I decided to run anyway. I'm still thinking of ways to deal with sometimes aggressive emails or social media posts, not emails. Actually, the emails that I have seen come through do disagree with me occasionally, but they're easy to respond to. I always talk about having a civil discourse and respecting their opinion and finding a way that we can, we can accept input and incorporate that into our decision-making, even when that is not the same point of view.
Thank you, Teresa. So we're going to make this our last question, and after this question, we're going to move on to our candidates' closing comments, but for this last question, the response order is going to be Teresa, followed by Keith, Lila, and then Phil. Brett?
Given the profound and ongoing impacts of COVID on public health and the local economy, is there, is there anything you would like to do as a council member to help city residents deal with this crisis?
Thank you for the question. We are living in an unprecedented time. This pandemic is global. We are living with it every day. It's affecting our economy very significantly. I'm a small business owner. I'm active with the Chamber. I talk to small business owners every day, and I talk to parents like me, whose kids are distance learning, and I know what a dramatic effect this is, COVID-19 is having on our daily lives, in all facets of our lives. As a council member, I do really appreciate, I will do what the council members have done in terms of debate the issues, consider ways that we can serve our residents, and I really appreciate the Small Business Loan Program, the Gift Card Program that they've done in conjunction with the CVA and the Carlsbad Chamber. I think that we need to do more programs like that. We need to find ways to bolster our local economy. We also need to increase signage. I saw signage in the village, and I know that the city has supported signage in conjunction with those other organizations at some businesses, but I haven't seen enough in District Four, and I'd like to see more of that for all of us and for our safety.
Thank you, Teresa. Keith, your turn.
We do wrestle with it. Teresa's right. The council has talked about it. We try to come up with as many ideas that are manageable we can to make it a little bit more tolerable for our residents. But for small businesses and the residents who rely on the income from their small businesses, it's devastating. We've tried our best. We've relaxed restrictions to allow outside parking lots and sidewalks. We have a lot more of those still in process. We've put together a $5 million low-interest loan program. We've matched funds with the Chamber of Commerce, and 53 businesses signed up for the Gift Card Program. We offer rent mediation to help between the renters and the landlords. We just started marketing for tourism, and we continue to work with the Chamber or anyone who has any creative ideas that we can make it a little bit easier for our residents and the businesses.
Thank you, Keith. Lila, your turn, please.
So most of us have two priorities right now, staying healthy and providing for our families. I'm an active member in the Chamber of Commerce's Ready Carlsbad Business Alliance, where we focus on emergency preparedness, response, and recovery, especially for our business community. Dave Harrison, who's our Assistant Director of Emergency Services, is our co-chair, and he's doing a stellar job. I know he's a Navy man, but I think he should adopt the Coast Guard's motto of "Centro Paratus", which is always ready. I'd like to see the city using its buying power to maybe source affordable PPEs. That's really a hard thing for our residents. I spoke to a dentist, local dentist. Before COVID, masks per box were about $5. Now they're $30 to $35. So huge increase in being able to provide a safe environment for people to come, whether you're in a small business, a dentist, or a restaurant. So I think the city can do more things like that, maybe even experiment with closing down State Street. I know there was a survey about that, but we can prototype and test it and see if that's something that would be a viable solution, because we don't know how much longer we're going to be in this situation.
Thank you, Lila. And Phil?
Back in March, when COVID first hit, I think most of us thought, we can do this. I can shut down for a week or two weeks, and that'll be okay. And now, six months later, we are still in the middle of this. We have to learn how to manage this, because it's not going away soon, and it is a very serious illness. I think the best thing that we can do is be safe. Be safe in opening our businesses. There are so many hypocrisies in some of the rules that we have. So I could be safe shopping at Costco, but a little mom and pop shop down on State Street, I'm not safe there. We need to make sure they're consistent. We need to open up our businesses safely so they can take care of themselves. And the city, I think, has done a great job. I love eating outside anyway, and it's nice, frankly, for some of these restaurants. They're working so hard, and we need to shop locally. Here in District Four, most of the restaurants and the food that's closest to my house, it's in Encinitas. We need to push to eat in Carlsbad, and I make a personal effort to make sure I'm doing that.
Thank you, Phil. So we are now officially moving on to our closing comments from our candidates, and these comments are scheduled to last 90 seconds. In the beginning, we started in alphabetical order with the candidates. In fairness to everybody, this time, we're going to start in reverse alphabetical order, so that means Teresa, Phil, Lila, and Keith, you will close us out with your closing comments. So again, first, Teresa.
Thank you for the opportunity to have the discussion about the election here tonight with the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce and our friends. I am proud that I was able to share a bit about my extensive experience and my deep commitment to you all. I am very proud to be one of four generations here in La Costa. I am excited about working on these issues of our quality of life. I know that I can bring my skill set in negotiations, in collaboration, in management and leadership. I know I'll put my MBA to good use here, looking at our budget as we consider the fallout from the pandemic. So I'm looking forward to applying all that I've shared with you tonight. I'm happy to speak with you further. I know there were more questions in the chat box, but I think maybe some people might want to get deeper into some of the issues, and I'm open to that. So please send me a note through the website, theresaacosta.org. I look forward to connecting with you. I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I'm proud to be running for Carlsbad City Council, District Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Phil, it is your turn.
I moved here to Carlsbad 40 years ago, and I found heaven. As a young man, I lived a block away from the beach, and I have been here ever since. I have been involved in the community, and I know people all over town, because I've worked with them on so many of their organizations. I am proud that my money is right here in Carlsbad. I have some love money, but it's not much. I have love money from the people here in Carlsbad who know me and have worked with me over the decades that I have served this city. I am proud that the mayor and six former city council members have endorsed my candidacy. They know what it takes to be an effective council member, and they know I will be one. They've worked with me. They worked with me when I took over the Carlsbad Christmas Bureau, and it had $20 in its checking account, and I turned that around. I spent 20 years as president of that, and we served 500 less fortunate families every year, and we were solvent. They've attended the Carlsbad Rotary Oktoberfest. I was the leader of that for six years, and it's a great community event, putting money right back into the city of Carlsbad. I have a proven record of service to my hometown city, Carlsbad. I bring leadership skills. I bring problem-solving, and I bring vision, and that's what I will bring to the city council as I continue to serve my fellow residents here in Carlsbad. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Phil. Lila?
The organizations that thrive in times of uncertainty don't just prepare for the future, they make it. One thing that this pandemic has made clear to all of us is that needs and assumptions can change quickly. To me, an effective government means putting the people of our Carlsbad community vision first, and it means being creative and adaptable to meet the needs of our residents. It means being proactive and leading from the front, not waiting to follow or living in the past. The challenges we're facing now are like nothing we've seen or experienced in our lifetime. The city council's job is to make policy decisions about the future of our community based on the Carlsbad community vision, which is the cornerstone of our general plan. Over the last decade, we've seen cracks in our foundation. As traffic and congestion have increased, building heights in the village have creeped up, and millions of taxpayer dollars have been sunk in the most expensive municipal golf course in the nation. We need leaders at the helm with the experience, know-how, and courage to navigate in uncharted waters. We need leaders who are going to tell you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear. We need leaders who prioritize courage over comfort, unity over division, and innovation over business as usual. COVID may have disrupted some of our short-term plans, but it has not canceled our long-term dreams for our Carlsbad community. My name is Lila Panagides, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Lilaforcarlsbad.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, it is your turn.
Thank you. I think experience and institutional knowledge is important. I'm not a newcomer to the city. I've been serving Carlsbad for over 33 years. I'm very proud of our city. When I speak about Carlsbad, I speak about Carlsbad the same way as I do when I'm speaking about my grandchildren. 12 years ago, I ran, not because I had an agenda. A lot of people run because they have something they want to change. I ran because I didn't want the city to change very much from the direction it was going in. Carlsbad was just a perfect city in my world, so I ran to continue that. I think that we've done an excellent job at continuing to protect the quality of life of our residents. But I also have to say, Teresa, it was fun hearing about the age of your grandfather all the way down to your daughter, so it made me start thinking, and I never really gave it a thought, but my grandmother lived here before she died. My 81-year-old grandma, her mother, still lives here, and my two-year-old granddaughter lives here, so it was kind of fun to think of it that way. So thanks, thanks for making me think about that. My whole, my whole drive for being on the council is the quality of life of our residents, not just the quality of life of my own family. So I, I'm going to be here forever. I don't plan on retiring somewhere else, and I want to continue to make the city the best I can make it. Thanks.
Thank you. So that concludes our program for tonight. I want to thank Brett and the staff at the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce for their work to organize this forum to give our candidates a chance to share their views. Catherine, I want to thank you for the amazing job you did keeping us on track. That was very, very, very well done. I want to thank our candidates. Carlsbad is an exceptional place to live. It's an exceptional place. Carlsbad is an exceptional place to live. It's an exceptional place for work-life balance. And we need exceptional leaders. So I want to thank you all for your desire to serve our community. So thank you. And last but not least, the goal of the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce is to give value to our community. Part of that value today, as a Chamber of Commerce, we don't endorse candidates. We do often take a position on certain rules, ballot initiatives that we feel may not be in favor of our business community. But again, we don't endorse candidates. What we do do is we try and give our community value in hearing from our candidates on the beliefs and opinions of the people running for the offices to educate and inform our community so that they can make the best decisions when it comes time to vote on November 3rd. So to everybody who spent an hour and a half and three extra minutes with us today, thank you for the time you gave us. Thank you to everybody involved. And I wish everybody safety and prosperity as we move into the next phase of the COVID pandemic. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Be safe, be well. Thank you for joining us.
And as a final thing, this will be posted on the chamber's website, carlsbad.org. We'll share this video. So if you know some people who weren't able to attend, let them know so they can see it. It should be up tomorrow. And thank you, Matt, our moderator.
My pleasure.